Good evening. I'd like to call to order this budget workshop meeting for Thursday, May 3, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the pledgeable allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Leterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shortell?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
And Zandry?
Here.
And Chairman Cervoni?
Here.
So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the council to take action to amend the budget, whether to increase or decrease or otherwise. With that... Counselor Shortell, you have a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had some questions for Mr. Hutt, and the outcome of those questions was that the insurance, health insurance line item could come down slightly due to some recalculations. So my motion is about that, specifically pursuant to Mr. Hutt's memo of May 1. My motion is that we reduce the health insurance mayor-approved line, that's account 55955, and we reduce that by $58,657.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Counselor Zandry. Did you get the motion?
I did not get all of it.
So, do you want me to repeat? I can repeat it.
Let her tell you what she has.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Reduce health insurance, 55595? Was that the number?
The account number is 55955.
Okay. Reduce by 58657?
Five, yes, 58657.
Okay, and then after that, I didn't hear what you said.
Per consult, Leterno is going to go to the linear trail. No, I'm kidding.
Oh.
I'm totally kidding. No, there is no F. That's just, that's just to reduce it. It's just to reduce the line item.
Just to reduce that line item?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay, got it.
Discussion from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes, that passed unanimously. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman and fellow counselors, based on the Board of Education's last report to us, they discovered savings attributed to their lean strategy improvements, and accordingly, I am motioning that we reduce the Board of Ed allocation by $411,612.
Second.
411612.
411612. So reduce the allocation to the Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And who seconded that?
Shortell.
Okay, thank you.
All right, discussion in the council. Counselor Zandry?
So, I, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The mayor's, the mayor, because I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're discussing here. The mayor reduced the number that the Board of Ed had. They had a, that new number, and this is that over and above that they came back with. All right, so, I just, before I started speaking on it, I wanted to make sure I understood what it was. I, I, I guess my concern is that we as a body up here now end up technically setting a bad precedent, because this is the way that I look at it. They very could, they very well have, could have just come forward and said, and I don't have the number right in front of me for the changes, but the, the mayor, the mayor asked us to come down to X. They basically came in before us and said, we got down, not only do we come down to X like the mayor needed us to, but we actually beat it by $411,000. So, my concern is, they, like I mentioned, they, they very well could have just come up and said, yep, we made it, we found enough ways to cut it, and we, we made the mayor's number. Here it is, this is how we're going to do it. And we wouldn't even be making this motion right now to take this extra money away from them. It's because they did the right thing, came forward and said, look, we found different ways to kind of manage certain things, and we're going to handle it. So, we're almost, in, in my mind's eye, we're punishing them for doing that, and we're actually telling every other department in town, you know, if, if the mayor gives you a number, or the mayor comes forward and says, you know what, I, I need you to tighten a little bit more, there, there is no reward for going any further. I, I completely trust that once we vote and give the Board of Ed their money, that they're going to spend it the way that they need to, have to. When they've got the money left over, they roll it over to that 1% account, and they use it for future things, other things that they don't have to put into future budgets. And I think that, that's admirable, that they, they went the extra mile. So I, as much as I'd like to get us down to a, a zero increase this year, much like we've been trying in other years, I, I think it's going to get voted down. But I mean, with, with this respect here, I, I don't see why we would want to go and, and take these extra monies away, because that's almost like saying, listen, we know you have a 1% account too, and there's a million dollars in that, why don't we just cut them another million while we're at it? Let them use the 1% account for their, for their future allocations, for their five-year strategic plan, and let them figure it out. I, I really, I'm, I'm open to hearing everybody else's comments and thoughts on this, but I, I think we're setting a bad precedent, and, and I'm, I'm hard-pressed to support taking additional monies away when they met the mayor's ask and then they beat it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Is the intention of this, or to not, um, allow the Board of Education to spend this, their surplus money on, as they have in the past?
No, I, I think the information we got from the night they were in front of us is that they're projecting for the end of this fiscal year, $1.6 million in surplus. And they're still going to have the ability to come before us, I think it's typically in September, to ask for the 1%. This is for the, for the 18, 19 fiscal year. It's money that they told us that they don't need for the year coming, and I don't know why we wouldn't take advantage of it, but the floor is yours.
Well, so they're returning it, in effect, correct?
Sure. They haven't gotten it yet.
Okay, I'm all set for now, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I think it sets a great precedent, and I, I, I think that, maybe not, I mean, not this year, but in future years, maybe as a council, we should go back to other departments besides the Board of Ed and scrutinize. But I, I applaud the Board of Ed for what they did. I think that every bit helps, as far as us trying to reduce the mill rate, so I, I don't have an issue with the 411 coming back, especially, as you said, Mr. Chairman, I was going to bring that up, they did say they have a $1.6 million surplus, that, that's a lot of money, and that's presumably next year they're going to have a big surplus too, based on the budgeting. So I think this is a great thing that they did, and I think we should be happy with it. They have a lot of money, they're very generously funded, they always have been, and I would, you know, I would not support any effort to go beyond the 411, and the 411 is fine, but I think this is a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Now, I, um, it is admirable that the Board of Ed has done this, and I hope that all of the other departments would follow that as well, that example. They, they met the mayor's ask, and now it's, it's our ask. This is our turn, and we have to decide whether we're going to raise taxes on it or not. You know, this isn't much different than the insurance motion that we just made. Couple of questions were asked, some updated numbers were made available, and we realized that we could slice, you know, $57,000 off the budget. This 411 is on top of a budget. This is an increase to a budget that produced a $1.67 million increase on what the Board of Ed is indicating are, is the implementation of new lean strategy improvements. So not necessarily one time, oh, we saved it this year, they're trying to say that we have new strategies and new ways of spending, and we generated $1.67 million. To me, that sounded more like that would be a kind of recurring strategy and recurring motion. You know, on one hand, the counselors are asking the mayor and the comptroller for budget reports that have, you know, the most recent, up-to-date information, and then, on this hand, we're saying, you know, we're, we would be saying, well, no, we don't want it. We don't want the most recent, up-to-date information, we just wanted it as of your ask, whenever the board voted for it in February or March. So, I think, I think it's great that they came forward with it, that they were that upfront, and I hope that everybody does that as well.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just wanted, I know some of my fellow counselors had thanked, praised the Board of Ed for doing this, and I wanted to do that too. It's unusual that money is offered and it's, in effect, rejected, and I was very assured when the Board of Education came before us and we specifically asked them, are you saying you don't need this money? The answer was in the affirmative. You know, that was of solace to me. Ultimately, we are a team trying to work together to operate a municipality, which, you know, of course includes education, and when we have overtures like that, it shows good faith, and it, it gives a little, a level of comfortability of working together, you know, for the betterment of our town. I'm good with, with this, what's before us. It's not a lot of money, and certainly we aren't grabbing it. They're saying we don't need it, so, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm sorry. Yeah. I'll be back there in an hour.
Thank you for the promotion, but it's not mine to take. Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So the, if I have the facts correct, then the board made a request, the mayor made a revised number, and then the board said that they didn't need the revised number, and now Counselor Zandry is on the same page as the mayor, saying that they needed this other figure. So I think if the board tells us they don't need the money, I don't know why we would try to force them to take it. You know, I think they made a good faith effort to reduce their budget, and I, I think the town side, it would be great if the town side could do the same thing. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morganstein?
Thank you. So the thing that I think is important to take away from this is that the term lean strategies, I believe, comes from the business world, and we find ourselves with a Board of Education that is functioning in that capacity. I would ask that the lesson we take from this is that the rest of our governmental bodies, departments, act in the same manner, and I only wish that we had a way to say, whatever portion the other side of the budget is, be reduced by a comparable amount, because if we could be imposing or encouraging, let's say encouraging, lean strategies, I, I think our taxpayers would be in a better circumstance. When I look at the things that have been taken out of the Board of Ed, somehow they've lowered their utility rate, so, you know, in these buildings, there's, there's various things that I would bet could be looked at in that regard. Textbooks bothers me a bit. I suppose maybe we're going more paperless, and we're certainly not doing that in the general government side of things. So, I certainly support the Board of Ed, I certainly support our town workers, and that would be my take-home messages. Certainly moving forward next year, lean strategies, and it would be nice if we had a way to do that this year, that the same proportion from the government side of things could be reduced. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few reactions to Counselor Morganstein's points. I know when, not that long ago, when Counselor Marone and I were on the Board of Ed, textbooks was something that we had the same concern about textbooks, that we're kind of, they were in the strategic budget, and we were kind of like, how is that strategic? Don't you use them every day? And I, and we, we actually got them moved into the sustained budget, and I think it's a yearly thing. I think it depends on, like you said, they're paperless sometimes, depends what they need them for, some textbooks get outdated. And I will also tend to agree about the lean strategy approach, but I will say that, that, you know, in the business world, there's a lot of fads, you know, it's, there's always something. Now it's Six Sigma, it's, it's lean strategies. I've only been up here for two and a half years, but I can tell you, in talking to department heads on the other side, I mean, there's certain departments in town that are doing more work than they did since the early 2000s with half the staff. So I think that it's not a well-known story, but I think there have been a lot of, if you look at the town side, the staffing, they're doing more with less, they could be doing, now again, I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm not saying there aren't things they can do more efficiently, but I do think that the, the, the portion of, of our government under the town has, has done extremely well, and, and maybe they haven't put a fancy term like lean strategies around it, but they've done a lot of reducing. And you go through this budget on that side of the ledger, I don't think there's a lot to cut there. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Zandry?
So I just wanted to follow up on, on one additional point. We, we've sat up here in years gone by, and, you know, the mayor has set the budget, and he sits down with the departments, he sets the budget, he sets the numbers, and then the departments will sometimes shy away from things that they need. They'll say, you know, maybe we could have used this, but we, we didn't want to ask, given, given the environment, given the economic setup, or whatever the case might have been. The message was, you probably shouldn't ask it, you probably won't get it. But, you know, here's a situation where the sit-down had already occurred, the numbers had already been come up with, and then the mayor had to make another change, and the mayor authorized $102,011,119. And they went back, they sharpened their pencils, they did even better. We had a discussion up here about the police last, last cycle through. The chief didn't ask for two patrol officers, that way, he was right on the fence about maybe needing, and we actually debated up here whether, whether or not we should include them, and we're, we're real fast today to just say, you know what, they've, they've come back and said they're not going to, they, they could shorten up and, and not use this. I just think that we're all going to be hard-pressed to be able to explain to the voting public, to the, to the parents and the teachers, when someone says, I'd like to know why they didn't get some new Chromebooks, because they're, they're going to defer these strategic items, or, you know, my kid doesn't have a math book, or they don't have a science book, or they could use one more guidance counselor. And they said it was because of budgeting, and they were trying to tighten up so well that they, they overdid it, but then later in the year they needed the money. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer that they should have just come right down to the authorized, the amount authorized by the mayor and stopped. They could have done that. They were honest, and they didn't. So I, I, I really hope that we have the ability to fairly and honestly answer these parents when they ask us the hard questions about, gee, you know, the schools could have used this, but they just didn't have this money. Because let's, let's face some facts, if we gave them what the mayor authorized, knowing that they've got this, this money reduction in here, and if they had some need during the course of the year, they could utilize it, they can't come back to us. If they have suddenly some need on the electricity, the unemployment, on transportation, they, they'll have to burn up their own contingency for it, which is why they've got it. But what would the harm have been to give them what the mayor already allocated, what he already baked in? So I, and again, we, we have sat up here before, and we have questioned the numbers that have come back, and we weren't reluctant to do so, but we, we seem to be very amenable to just going ahead and, and now playing the point of direction of saying, you know what, great, we'll bring it down. If, if the police chief came forward and said, I need another officer, would we be as forward about saying, you know what, let's make the change up here at this table? I was good cutting the money from the insurance side, because that was an actual spend they didn't need to make. These things are things that they're juggling around, they're coming up with other funds, they're making some assumptions on reductions. If things fall out of favor, they're going to need that money, they're going to be dipping in, and they can't come back to us, they're going to have to burn contingency. So, again, to me, it would have been better to say, look, the mayor gave a number, let's not tamper with it. But if, if, if that's the way the majority goes, great, but then I don't want us to shy away from it some other day. Some other day, when someone says, why aren't we questioning it? I'm going to say, you're right, why aren't we? Because we're doing it today. We, we are up here saying that, based on the mayor's number, and using the guidance that we got from Dr. Menzo, let's cut it. I don't want to do that, but it sounds like I'm going to end up being in the minority, and I'm good with that. So, thank you.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. If someone came up to me and asked me, how come we didn't get the Chromebooks? I would say, then go ask the Board of Education. They're the ones that came to us and said, we don't need this $411,000. Then what would I say to all the people that come up to me and say, why did you raise my taxes for that extra $411,000 when the Board of Ed came to you and said, we don't want it, we don't need it, here, take it, this is our goodwill effort? They came to say, here, like, we're trying to help. And you might not have heard me make the comment before when you were, you were sidebar-ing earlier, but this is $411,000 in, over the allocation we're already talking about giving them, an allocation that's over a budget that gave them a $1.67 million surplus because of the lean strategies. So, they did their job, and they're helping us out, and now it's time to do ours. And I think that's why it's, it's responsible for us to remove that right now.
Counselor Shortell?
Well, I mean, Counselor Zandry, I completely agree with you. I would not have gone beyond the mayor's number either if I were them, but, you know, they did. And I also, you, we were on the same page as far as the police officers two years ago, so I, I'm happy to see that that's happening this year. You know, I think, and I was just going to say what Counselor, what Vice Chair Laffin said, if, if I'm approached by a parent about Chromebooks, I mean, we don't control how they spend their money. The Board of Ed controls that, and, and they have, you know, the, the mayor's not going to like me saying this, the mayor, they, that budget, the Board of Ed budget has increased $15 million this decade. The mayor's been very generous with them, despite maybe what you read on Facebook, or all the outcry every few years when there's a, when there's a cut. There's never been a cut, it's illegal to cut them. There's been a reduction in the increase. That has grown $15 million since the year 2010, so they are generously funded, and I, I think they do a great job, and so I don't think, and again, to Counselor, to Vice Chair Laffin's point, this is on top of another increase they're getting. So I'm, I agree with, again, I agree with you, you should take what you can get, but they came to us, and I think, I, I feel confident in, in this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the, the actual effect of giving, especially with government, giving one money when they're saying they don't need it, won't spend it, is just appropriating money to the 1% account. You know, the, the Chromebook situation, if they're saying they, they're not going to spend this money, they're not going to have Chromebooks, whatever, that's a choice by the Board of Education, and if they choose not to do that, that, that is solely their choice. So certainly, there's capital expenditures that could be done, but once again, it's not our decision. So, I, I think it would be, quite frankly, with all due respect, irresponsible for us to say, you know, taxpayers, you have to pay a tax increase to give money to the Board of Education, which they have told us they don't need and they won't spend. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry?
I just want to answer that, one last comment, about effectively what we'd be doing is increasing taxes to fund their, their 1% account. What do you think we've been doing for 10 years up here, except last year? And the only reason the amount went down is because we've spent money going forward by moving our general fund balance from $20 million to $29 million last year. Every year, we've done that in the entire budget, between Board of Ed and the general government side. That's exactly what we've been doing all the way through, and we're going after the Board of Ed, only because they were, they were honest enough to come forward and say, if we're really being truthful, if we're really being honest, we could beat the number, and this is how we would do it. And we're rewarding them by holding the line. That's great. I, it really bothers me that we sit up here and pass budgets every year and grow that surplus account, and we're making an example out of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Anything else? Comments from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes, the motion passes. Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when we, every time we get to this point, this time of year, I feel like we go through the budget meetings, they're thinly attended, I mean, we get a quorum, but they're more or less thinly attended. There's a lot of confusion over, you know, what goes into the budget, all the department heads come up here, we talk about our pet projects, and the net effect, the past couple of years, has been, when we get to this point, we've added money to the budget, because we have different things that different council, counselors want. You know, we talk about things that are not really relative to, to budgets. I just feel like there's a lot of time and energy wasted in this whole process. And part of my concern is that, as a town, we don't really have a plan as a town. I mean, we, we have the plan of conservation development, but I don't know that we're really living into that. So between education and general government, and I alluded to this last week, there really isn't a plan on when we improve something. So we spend money, the school system spends money on the things that they find important, the town spends money on the things that they find important, but there's really no system or process by which we decide what's important. So what I would like to do is take the money that we've saved from the Board of Ed today, the $411,000 and the $58,000 from the, um, the health insurance savings, and set that aside in a separate capital account, that would be at the disposal of either the Board of Ed or town departments that see a, a need to use that money for some sort of capital improvement. So, you know, while I understand we could reduce taxes by that amount, we're talking about $400 and something thousand, right? It's less than a half a mil. I think there's a lot of needs in town, of things that need to, capital improvements in town that, that need to get handled. The rec department had some excellent ones on that sheet they handed us. We have a real problem with the community pool. I think there's a lot of needs in town, and I think that we should, year after year, set aside more money into such an account, take it out of the Board of Ed budget, take it out of the budgets of different town departments, and put this money in a separate account where we can make a decision, sort of as a community, what, what are our priorities? As opposed to letting the department heads and the Board of Ed, you know, make those decisions on their own. I might find that development to a park in one part of town is more important than, say, the window blinds at Moran Middle School or something, just to, to use a silly example. So, that's my motion, to take the money that we've saved tonight, set it aside in a separate capital account, that would be available for town departments and the Board of Ed, depending on what we decided the need was later on.
Second.
And who was that seconding?
Counselor Shortell.
Thank you.
Mr. Bose, how does that work? Do you, would you take that money and would you put it into an account line that already exists? Would you create an account line for it?
I'd, I'd create something so it would stand alone, so whatever.
I'd create something so it would stand alone, so everyone could see it. But if the motion passes and that's what you adopt next week officially, then I'll make it work and show the nine of you how it came about.
Okay. And when we have surplus money or money that's put aside for whatever reason, we don't necessarily have to have an ordinance to direct how it's spent, we can.
No.
We can use policies or.
No.
Okay.
Just that the spending, any movement of those funds would, you know, come through the normal process of the request of the mayor and then ultimately back to yourselves for your consideration.
Okay. Mayor?
I think you understand, of course, then we're still taxing. So the money is taxed in order to produce the money. I'd have to say, I really think we need to reduce the mil rate. I said when I offered the budget initially, that it's higher than I think it ought to be, I think it ought to be down near 2%, but at least, at least this brings it down. But we've got to reduce spending, not look for ways to constantly spend more.
Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you. So on the one hand, that very statement is something that I wanted to put forth here in this body, but I wasn't quite sure how to do it. And so I think this jumps off very well to this whole budget process and the whole fact that we are yet again raising people's taxes should come with a plan. We should have a plan of where do we see ourselves going? Where do we see Wallingford being able to attract businesses, attract people that come here to work for a business to want to live here? We need to be growing our tax base and that does take investment. I think if we as a body come away from this effort saying, this is where we sit financially, we should at the end of this process have not just, well, we're treading water and we're keeping it all going and here you are. I think people for that increase in their taxes should have a plan. I, in my own home, am looking at, I need a new kitchen because when I retire and this house needs to be sold, I can no longer have the 1970s kitchen, that linoleum is falling apart. We are looking at a town, $3 million is needed for Sheehan's bathrooms. My son, who graduated in 2011, the marching band, when they had their shows relative to other towns, we were a great band, but the towns would come and they would see our infrastructure and people look at Wallingford and go, I think I'd really rather be living somewhere else. And we're a great town and I don't listen to the, well, move away if you're not happy. I listen to the, well, move forward and allow people's tax dollars to gain us something. So I agree on the one hand, but yeah, to add it to the mil rate doesn't really feel right. I'll be happy to hear some other ideas. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there is a vehicle, in my opinion, that we could do this and that's the cap and non-recurring account, which is there for capital expenditures. And certainly, if there's concerns as to how our capital expenditures are made, we have the ability to even move the money that's there. You know, I don't think that, I mean, there's already, I think, Mr. Bose, correct me if I'm wrong, because I had asked you this about a year ago, I think there's $386,000 in cap and non-recurring that's unencumbered, unappropriate, undesignated from prior projects that had ended under budget.
That's correct, yeah, so it was a little under 400. We haven't done the analysis yet for the end of this fiscal year, obviously, but it was a shy amount, under 400,000, that's correct.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, those are monies that we could say now, you know, if we want to pave a lot or something like that, because I think the way the ordinance lies, you know, we determine with a recommendation of the administration how that money is spent. You know, so we have that vehicle now. You know, I would be more in favor of at least reducing the, what's perceived to be an increased tax liability on our residents than banking this, when we already have money that we're not using in this account. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Mr. Bose, that putting this money aside this way, does it change the council's ability to access this money? We don't, we don't move money independently.
I would move the money out of the general fund to charge the general fund into a new bookkeeping account. If you guys up there could give me some more specificity, if it's more in the capital sense that Mr. Marone is speaking, or that something a little bit more futuristic is a little bit too general, but if you could just, if you decide to give me a little bit more specificity. And then go into a bookkeeping fund where there is no, there's no lapsing at year end, it's still part of the town's books, it's still audited, et cetera, et cetera.
I think you've got one more horse on the cart than I'm putting there at this point. What I'm trying to understand is, would this be any different than any other budget line that we currently have where?
Yes, in the fact that it would not be in the general fund.
Thank you. What I'm trying to get at.
Sorry.
Is under the charter.
Keep trying.
Thank you. Under the charter, we don't, the council does not independently move money.
That's correct.
The administration has to initiate the transfer.
Through the normal process, that's correct.
That's the point I'm getting at. So just like any other money in the bank, we can't get at it without an administrative initiation of the transfer.
Or administration acceptance of the proposal, that's correct.
Right. Thank you. That's what I was trying to get at. Counselors Zandry.
Thank you. So I have maybe a question, definitely a comment. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, Counselor Marone, when you were talking about that money, you're not talking about the fact that we, you know, we pulled it out of the two lines, the savings there and what we pulled out of the Board of Ed and taking that active money that's in a budget that we're planning for next year and utilizing it direct, because that means we're still taxing the public. Are you making the point of other monies, like the general fund monies instead of aside? Because I want to get understanding which money you're talking about.
Yeah, thank you. So my thought was that, you know, we're kind of like riding the carousel as a town government, right? You either get on the horse when it comes around or you don't. And no matter what happens, you end up in the same spot when it comes around again. So my thought is to try to break the cycle, perhaps we take the money that we, this money as a sort of seed money, and then next year we remove things from other budgets, other capital projects from other budgets, and they go into this account as opposed to just going into the, you know, just feeding the carousel going around every time. So I'm just trying to break the cycle of continually, you know, we get to this point, we have a lot of hand wringing about what to spend the money on, and then we sort of do the same thing we did the last year. So I'm just trying to break us out of the cycle. And so my thought was, we use that specific money this year as a seed for next year going after more capital money. And then eventually, what I'd like to see is the town have a capital improvement budget that's separate from our regular municipal budget where we spend capital improvements, you know, townwide.
All right. So the way that I just understood that is, we're still going to tax the people and utilize that money. We're not going to give it to the Board of Ed, we're not going to spend it on the line item for the insurance, but we're going to tax them and instead of letting it go to the general fund, we're going to put it aside in an account for something more earmarked.
Correct.
All right. So based on the argument that I've already heard up here in general, which was, and this is not to your point per se, but the idea is, we don't want to give the Board of Ed the money because we're putting it on the back of the taxpayer, but we want to do something like this, which ends up on the back of the taxpayer. Now, as an offshoot of what you're trying to do, it might be better to either say, in my opinion, it would be either to say, when we reach a point of reconciliation at the end of a fiscal year, when we've got that money, last year aside, because we actually came down, we're always rolling that money and increasing the general fund balance, maybe to take an earmark of that and put it in under something so that it doesn't just end back up in the general savings account. If that's what you're trying to do, that's what I'd like to see us do too. I just don't think that trying to do it on the back of this budget setup, because it still puts it on the back of the taxpayer. What I'd like to do or see done is instead of, it's kind of like if you, if your target is with your own personal finances is to save $5,000 a year and you've saved $7,000, then let's take the $2,000 and put it into a pool fund. I'm going to put a pool in my backyard. But I wouldn't necessarily do something different. So to me, it's like if we're showing a surplus, rather than letting it go into the general account, put it in a special account, that's great. There is another way to control the money, if I'm not mistaken, but that would require us to fund like a budget for the town council and that would fault out every year. So if we were to allocate, as an example, a line item for our budget to be $100,000 for this body to vote to do something, if we had that budget, we could spend it. The end of a fiscal year, if we didn't spend it, it would go back like anybody, any department's budget, it would roll back. Mr. Bose, am I correct on that?
Yes, it would roll back if it were kept in the general fund.
Right. So the idea would be, we could allocate, we could set a line item up for the town council to have $100,000 to spend. If we wanted to spend our money on something in the town, we could make a motion to do it. And then if there was still $98,000 at the end of the year, we'd just roll back every year. The way to do it would probably be the way we were talking about it a little earlier so that it would sit in a capital account and it would be able to escape every year and not have to be returned to the general bucket. But I think the ability to do it on a bottom line number, which is going to generate that tax increase to the taxpayer, that's the wrong way, just in my opinion, is the wrong way to buy it. So I like your idea, I'd like you to improve upon it and find a different way to get that. Because if the argument up here is, I want to lessen the burden to the taxpayer, which I do, then we can't do it your way because it keeps the mil rate right where it is, it keeps the increase right where it is. And I can't support that given my lax argument all by itself, but my feelings in general that we already need to do more to kind of pull away from where our increases are. As far as, like I said, if you've got an idea for the surplus at the end of the year, you know, when we, if we surplus on it, I'm all for it. That's why, like even we had said last year, if, nobody wanted to cut the pension fund line. So when the pension fund had more money collected, I basically said, that's actually what we were asking for, don't let that money go back to the general fund. If we can't do anything else with that little bit of extra money, let's push it into the pension fund. At least it goes there. It failed, it ended up in the general fund. So I like your idea.
Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I liked the pension fund thing too, by the way, for the record. But so I'm, I guess I don't understand what the difference is between, like what this would be versus the capital accounts that we have already. It's mayor-controlled versus council-controlled or whatever, I guess. And paired with, when you were describing like the councils like pet projects, then it starts to sound like slush fundy to me and that makes me nervous about the way that it was worded or presented. Ultimately, we could, we could look at all the capital accounts and move the money around or take them out and put them wherever we want anyway, or we could try to and then whether the mayor actually executes the spending or not, I guess is different. I think we, if that's the goal, then we need to work on our influence or our input into the projects over the year or at the beginning of the budget process and when the recommendations are being made to the mayor and then continue that input and influence while the mayor makes his considerations. I don't, and I've been through the budget and I've been sick the past couple of days from work, so it gave me more time with the budget. And I really don't have a problem with any of the spending, let's say, in the budget. I'm just trying to keep the mil rate and the taxes as low as possible. It's not that I, you know, there's this line in here that I'm going to be outraged if we spend any money on. I'm just trying to prioritize and see where we can siphon things off and thin things out. So my, aside from everything else I said about the slush fund and not understanding all that, like, my preference is really to try and cut the mil rate down wherever we can. And $411,000 isn't a lot of the $100 million Board of Ed budget. If you, if you talk about percents, it's even less of the $165 million town budget. But it's $411,000 and that's more than we usually get, especially when some town departments have come in, you know, $100,000 less than last year and things like that. So I'm going to take the opportunity to try and slim down the mil rate.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my thought was not to create a slush fund, I think there's plenty of needs in town and I agree with Mr. Zandry that this is an inelegant solution to this problem, but I don't see where, at the end of the budget cycle, where we can get to it. Because we never budget with a surplus in mind, right? We assume we're going to spend all the money that's in the budget. So at the end of the year, when we have the surplus, the council really has no control over where the money goes. So my thought is if we appropriate the money upfront, then we can guarantee that that money makes it into that account. I agree that it is, it's a very inelegant solution, right? Because it's, you are taxing people to fund this area. But I think in future years, then you look at refining other capital improvements and they go right to the fund as opposed to going in the line items of the budget. So I think it's an investment in year one and then potentially you can reap some rewards in later years. I just think that as a community, we need to have more of a discussion about what we, what we spend money on in terms of capital. Because as it is now, what we see or we see the items that have already been brought up by the department heads, vetted by the mayor, you know, and then what makes it to the final budget. So the rec department gave us some examples of some other projects they want to work on, but we don't really know what else is out there unless you've had a discussion with a department head specifically about what it is they're looking for. You know, we had the discussion last year about the two cops. If the, if that hadn't been in the paper, if that wasn't a public item, no one would have even known that two cops were necessary because it wouldn't have made it through the initial vetting process. So that was, I hope that clarifies a little bit.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I applaud the concept. We can get there. We're already there in a way. It sounds to me, this sounds like you're proposing a transfer within a budget that doesn't exist yet. Follow that, please. And maybe, it might make sense to myself even. But you're doing so in a way where, you know, we're going to be taxing in order to get the seed money. So a couple of things come to mind. You don't have to do it this way. We have 20-plus million dollars already sitting somewhere. You could propose the establishment of a fund and a transfer from that existing money into that fund, which I believe would be the proper way to go because the money already exists. That's one way you could do this. You could, as has been suggested, at any time during the year, at the end of the year, propose the creation of the fund and transfer money from an existing budget through surplus monies or extra money or unused money, or at the end of the budget year, money that we would consider fund balance money. None of that would require, you know, a component of the new budget, which is new tax dollars. Having said that, and I like going one of those ways, having said that, there is a vehicle for this already existing in the charter. We have a capital non-recurring fund. We're used to that capital and recurring fund being solely made up of the electric division contribution, but there is a way of taxing to add to that fund. You can add up to a 2% surtax, additional, whatever it's called, a two mil additional tax. So if you wanted to fund this, create this fund with new tax dollars, it would, in my opinion, be more appropriate to have used that means. Say, here's the budget, but I want, we want to add additional money to our capital non-recurring fund for capital projects. The charter has allowed that since the charter was first created. You can add an additional tax. It's like having some towns have sewer taxes and some towns have board taxes. You could do it that way too, if you wanted to fund it with additional tax dollars. As I was thinking about this, I thought, well, that, you know, are we allowed to carry that money over? Do we have to earmark it each year? But if you created a new fund, I'm not sure, that could carry over every year. So I think the operation, the logistical operation of such a fund could be worked out regardless of how it's established, regardless of how it's funded. I would not advocate or support an effort at this point to create this fund with tax dollars in a new budget. I love the idea of doing it, creating it with existing money that we have and/or with upcoming surplus money or leftover money. That would be wonderful because what I think it does is it allows us to get on, I guess, approach capital expenditures a little differently. And I've been in favor of that for a long time. I love the idea that you've come up. I love the idea that you've come up with something different. And I'd be willing to work cooperatively as a group to reach that goal. But I would be opposed to your motion. Okay. And you understand why. Thank you very much.
Counselor Shore-Tell. He totally agrees with you. He totally sees what you're saying.
I say the same thing.
But he's going to vote no. I, um, I love Counselor Marone's suggestion. I understand the concerns about how to do it. But I think it's a fair suggestion. I'm not going to, I mean, I think it's a great suggestion. I have a question. And I don't know if the question's for Chairman Servoni with his legal expertise or Mr. Bose or the mayor. My question is around all the surplus, the yearly surplus. Is there a mechanism? Could the council, I'm not saying I'd want to do this. I'm just asking hypothetically. Does the council have a way to say now for next year's budget, any excess funds beyond the budget for this coming budget year have to go to X account? Like, do we have that ability? Is there an ordinance? Is there a way we, or we can't do that?
No.
There's no like mechanism, there's no mechanism to do that? There's no way?
No, there's really, there really isn't. And there has to be, the word appropriation, meaning legal authority to spend involves some specificity as well. So I don't, a blanket like that, I don't think is going to, going to work. But I was going to mention, the chairman was just going to call on me before. Mr. Testa was, must have been reading my mind, which is probably a bad day for him. But with regards to the mechanism that you may have, if there is something out there that you folks maybe get together or come to agree upon trying to perform, and that is the cap and non-recurring fund, it's already built in for that. And I was going to state the, as Mr. Fishbein was saying before, there are some funds already in there. I used the phrase paid for over the years. Those funds have accumulated over at least five or six years, maybe a little bit longer. Because if you have about $2 million budgeted in the cap and non-recurring fund and we don't spend out of those $2 million, if prices come in a little bit better or estimates were a little bit high, 50, 60,000, $80,000 a year not spent and that those projects get finished, five years, you got 400 grand. It's about where we are now, if you will. And Mr. Testa remembered the fact that that ordinance does allow the town, if you wish, up to two mils of taxes to be infused into the cap and non-recurring fund for items, you know, that you may want to partake or undertake, I should say. So can a different bookkeeping fund be established? The answer is yes. Can we do that if you wish? Yes. I, but if you want, the ideas generation, fantastic. Not a problem at all. But I think the mechanism's already there. And you don't have to, we also have to be careful because the projects have to be undertaken within three years of appropriation. So if you said tonight, let's do, I don't know, name a parking lot or somebody. If something doesn't happen with three years, those funds lapse under the charter. It says because they're officially declared, what's that term? I forgot the term now, but abandoned, I'm sorry, to be abandoned. So, but if you start spending within the three years for that specified appropriation, not a surplus, but of an appropriation, then it's sort of, you know, we, then we of course adhere to that charter provision. So allowing closeout of another year of some funds in the cap and non-recurring fund that may increase that 400 grand and/or if the council wished to take the approach of appropriating some funds, not to be appropriating it, but just to leave it in their cap and non-refund, recurring fund for use at a certain date is certainly, I think, the simplest way to go about it. I think it leaves a really nice auditable trail. Everything has to come to the council through the mayor's office. You have to the mayor first, just like every other authorization to spend. And I think that's really, frankly, like I said, the funds that are in there that haven't been spent, you know, due to some positive results are there, have already been paid for in essence. So I, you know, again, everything that has been, I think, all the, Mr. Marones and Mr. Zandry's, Mr. Morganstine's, those, those, those options, sure, we can do those. But I think we already have that mechanism. That's really at your disposal already. But that's up to you folks.
Again, could I ask Mr. Bose, can I do a follow-up? That's not, it's, well, it may influence how I vote on this motion and other motions, but it's a little bit off topic. But it's, that's why I'm asking. And I want to make sure I have my numbers right. I want to say in the late fall, you talked about that we budgeted like $7 million for state cut, potential state cuts. And that's the number, that's the first number I want to question.
I did not hear part of your question.
Did we, how, we budgeted, for this, the budget that we're in currently, we budgeted a certain amount of money to be ready for potential state cuts? I think it was 7 million?
We increased our utilization of the fund balance from about 4, 2 million to 7.2 million. And that offset what was in the finalized budgetary.
That was the number?
That's where we were at that point last May when we had to, when you folks had to jump off to meet the charter requirement, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bose.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the procedural problem, with all due respect, to creating a line like this is unless the council was to give out grants to third-party entities, there's no way that that money could actually get spent. For instance, if there's a million dollars in the account and this body wants to redo community pool without the mayor's cooperation, taking it upon ourselves, we don't have any power to direct a department head to pick up a shovel. We don't have power to have the purchasing department put together a bid document. So that money never gets expended, you know, unless it's treated like in the mayor's budget where he makes, you know, the youth soccer and, you know, if we're going to write checks to other people, sure, we could do that. We could appropriate money. We can't utilize the money. And therefore, you know, and the cap and non-recurring, to my knowledge, is the only budget in our budget that does not revert. So to meet the intent, as I stated earlier, that would be the only place that it could go. As to the sources of cap and non-recurring, a question was asked about whether or not we could take the surplus at the end of the year and appropriate that. You know, I argue that one could do that because at some point, somebody's going to say we had a surplus of X. And we've learned in the past that monies that are in surplus at the end of a fiscal year, they go to the general fund. So once you've established what the surplus was, this body, I suppose, could authorize the transfer from reserves to cap and non-recurring. And in support of that, I'll bring to your attention the ordinance that deals with the sources of funding for the cap and non-recurring account. And that's Section 46-6 of our local ordinances. And A says, "Amounts authorized to be transferred thereto from the general fund cash surplus available at the end of any fiscal year." So I think it is authorized. You could do it. And certainly, you know, I would want to do it with the cooperation of the mayor. But I think you could do it. We could raise taxes, which I don't suggest, by annual levy of a tax not exceeding two mils for the benefit expressly of funding cap and non-recurring. That's another way that it could be funded. So, you know, ultimately, I think we need cooperation, you know, to move forward. I appreciate the intent of the motion, but I don't think as moved that it would ever get expended to the intent of the motion. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments on the council? Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on Counselor Testa's comments, my understanding, Mr. Bose, is that there's about $3 million in the CRA fund?
Ah, yes, approximately.
What, would it be feasible to move the CRA money into the cap non-recurring fund and cede it that way as opposed to using the savings from this evening?
Well, the funds are sort of unrelated. The CRA funds, we, as you see in the budget document, we do use for various school and town, major capital type of items, hopefully to not spike the mill rate up. But to move money from, all you're really doing is moving money from one reserve account, which is a special revenue fund, CRA distribution fund there, to the cap and non-recurring. You're really not achieving all that much because the funds are still there. They're not in the general fund. They're not part of the general fund reserves or anything like that. They're free and independent from the general fund. So moving from one fund, one non-general fund, if you will, a fund that's not the general fund, that's not basically funded by tax dollars to, you know, from, in this case, a special revenue fund to a cap and non or any other capital projects fund, there really isn't anything to be gained by doing that.
So the CRA money, we're not going to get any more of it though? I mean, it's done at this point, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Those were from the reserves from that project that accumulated over time and they were dispersed to the member municipalities over a few years.
Right, so and we use that for capital projects now? So once that money is expended, then the fund will dissolve?
Then that fund will dissolve and it'll, once it's zeroed out for a year, it goes off of our funded financial statements because there won't be any left on it.
So to Mr., to Counselor Testa's point, we, the taxes may not be the best place to cede this money from. But my thought was, could you cede a program like that where we had a town and capital improvement budget? So what we're doing now is we're taking a piecemeal from the CRA money. What if we just moved the whole CRA money into the, into a different fund or the cap non-recurring and then used it to cede the same?
I have to think it's a little bit more thought. But I, again, I don't see much of a difference just sitting here. But I do promise I will mull that over. But I don't really feel comfortable about, I'm not trying to duck your question. You know that by now. But I'm not trying to, I don't, I certainly want to mislead you with my, until I have a chance to think it over.
Also, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, during the conversation, a couple more thoughts came up. And I'm just going to make some general comments to most of them. So I'll try to keep it short. So the first, first general comment that I want to make is, we, no matter what happens, we have to have cooperation with the mayor's office, whether it's Mayor Dickinson or somebody in the future. And it's a different body up here too. Because the end result is if you don't get buy-in from that office, you're going to end up with an issue of any department head. Because even if we had money to give and we got it from here, any, any smart department head knows that if, if any sitting mayor doesn't like the idea of that money being spent for something and they were to actually go ahead and execute on that, there wouldn't be a sitting department head much longer. I mean, let's just be fair about that. I'm not picking on Mayor Dickinson at all because it could be anybody. So no matter what gets done, it has to be done in cooperation with the mayor's office. I really want to stress the other comments that I've been hearing about, you know, we could do up to two mils. Because the entire conversation this evening has been about getting the pressure off of the taxpayer. We could do two mils, but it completely flies counter to every other comment that I've heard up here this evening. One mil is about $4 million that we could fill up that account. But it's going to cost the average taxpayer $178 a year. That's $14.65 a month. And we just hammered down $471,000 to save everybody $16 a year. $16 a year, a dollar forty a month. I, I, I'm not picking on the idea. I'm trying to make sure that you understand where I'm coming from. I like the idea of earmarking stuff so that it goes to something and doesn't just sit in this bucket. But when we talk about maybe utilizing something that's, you know, there, we could just assign a tenth of a mil or two tenths of a mil, that's real money. That's bigger than what we've cut and saved tonight. Like I said, we saved $471,000 as we sit here right now if we adopt this budget. That saves the average homeowner $16.75 a year. That's the kind of math that I have a problem answering people when they ask me about the textbook, when they ask me about, I don't know, an extra hour at the, at community pool. What did we get for trimming the service and cutting back a little bit and saving me on my taxes? Well, for a dollar forty a month, we could have got you $471,000 more services. And, and I didn't, I didn't want to go here because then the counter to that is, well, it's 20 bucks here, it's 20 bucks here, before you know it, it's $10,000. I agree. But when, when you know the money's getting spent on something, and this kind of plays to your point, when you know it's going to go into a bucket for something and not just into a bucket for savings, I'm better for myself to spend it or to say to the taxpayer, look, we're putting it aside because we're going to fix this. We're going to do that. We're going to brighten this. So that's why I like your idea. We've just got to get more creative about it because it can't, it's got to come out of surplus money. It's got to come out of savings somewhere else. It can't come out of using the mill rate because that just puts it on the taxpayer. Thank you.
Anything from the public? Mr. Bose?
I'm just sorry, I, I just don't want Mr. Zandry to leave tonight. I was not advocating using two mils of taxes. I was just referring to the, yeah, no one.
I went to the maximum example.
I don't want my stone in the parking lot on the way out. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
You mean have people throw rocks at you, right?
Until it becomes legal, yes.
Right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein.
No.
Lathan.
No.
Leterno.
No.
Marone.
No.
Morganstine.
No.
Shore-Tell.
Yes.
Testa.
Tempted to abstain. No.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Servoni.
No. Any other motions? Before we adjourn, I'd just like to give you all an update on the fireworks fundraising.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Just if we could have a motion to reduce the current tax revenue line item so I can adjust the mill rate down?
Oh, I thought you would do that on Tuesday night. But we will.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I.
What's your preference?
I'll, unless you want to keep contemplating matters over the weekend and whatnot, I could certainly wait. But if it's done prior to, I could have those motions and the calculations made for you. If not, we'll shut the meeting down if we need to.
Apparently, we're not done with motions.
See you Tuesday night.
No, we're not done. No, we're not done. We'll see you for a little while.
Oh, see you here, okay.
Yes. Counselor Fishmine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'd like to have a zero tax increase, and I think there's ways that we could get there. So, I did go through the budget, and there are certain things that I thought were larger than they should be. And there is one addition. So, one of the lines that I looked at was in the debt service, line 8582, the new debt financing, which is $800,000. I know a portion of that is for collective bargain contracts that are out there. I think that was the representation.
The new debt? No, the new debt is not for...
No portion, no portion of that is for...
That's correct. That's in the accrued contingency. There's a line item in the contingency budget, which is, I don't have the page number, that's, there's a line item that's called general.
Okay.
And then the accrued.
So, then, so then, the new debt financing, which is currently $800,000, which is an anomaly from past years?
Those are for bonds that we're going to be issuing soon, and then, actually, I come to this board, once we get the breakdown of the principal and the interest, to break that $800,000 out into the principal and the interest. The way the town's been doing that over the years, and it's, it's neither right nor wrong, but it's just the way that's been happening, is that we provide the council members a, a schedule of the, the debt outstanding by fiscal year for each item that we still have, debts outstanding, bonds outstanding for. And then, we put in that new debt line item, any new debt that we anticipate borrowing that's got to be paid back next fiscal year. It's just so that, that those spreadsheets tie in exactly to the two line items prior to that, the principal line item for debt repayment and the interest repayment, those two spreadsheets that are right within the, that little page of your three-ring binder that, that follow the main page, tie into those perfectly. Doesn't have to be that way, but that's the way we've done it.
And I think we talked about bonds a lot during that particular session, and I don't know how we could possibly spend $800,000 in one year for new debt financing.
Well, we anticipate bonding between eight and nine million dollars, divided by about 20, 20-year amortization, if I take the full amortization, which now it looks like we probably will. That's going to give us between $400,000 and $450,000 of principal that's going to be due and payable in the fiscal year, in which you're analyzing now. And we've seen coupon rates, you know, three and a half, 4% right now in year one. The yield curve is very weird, for some strange reason, Mr. Fishmine, and I, I wish I had an answer for you, I don't know why. Middletown actually sold some bonds that are very good quality debt as well. Their first two, two years of coupon rates were 5%.
So...
And then, and then, and then, and then the yield curve kind of goes like this, and it's, and then down like, like year four, five, six, they're down to the threes, which is strange. So, $800,000, if I issue that number of bonds, may not be enough, to be honest with you, if we sell at a, it's a competitive sale, of course, it's a bid sale. If the interest rate's coming at 5% for 10 million, that'd be half a million dollars next year.
In next year?
Into fiscal year that you're analyzing.
Yeah, so...
That's correct. So, that plus the principal is, I'm hoping to be $800,000 and no more. That's why that line...
And we have no documentary support at this?
Not right now, because we have not yet sold the bonds, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm proposing to cut that line by $200,000. The next item that I think is overly budgeted is this parade, which there is no budget for. There is, there is nothing, there is no backup, and I really don't know how we can ever talk about spending $100,000 on a parade. We can't even fund fireworks. I, I think since the 2020 has a pledge of $20,000 already, we gave them $7,500 last year, they're selling product, I could reasonably believe that that money would perhaps garner $10,000, so they would be at 30. I don't see why appropriating $10,000 in this budget, and perhaps another $10,000 next year, a $50,000 parade, understanding that we still don't have a budget for this thing. I think that's a really good number, considering that today, our parade, Memorial Day Parade, which is a decent parade, we budget $3,500 every year. So, you know, that's more than 10 times what we currently budget. I, I really think that that's appropriate. So, I propose to knock that down, and that's line on the social service contributions, 58280, from 35,000, uh, from 50,000, uh, no, I'm sorry, it was $45,000 in this budget. I would cut that by $35,000 down to 10,000. The next one is the WCI facade program, which is line 58253. You know, the downtown is our lifeblood, and we have WCI before us saying, "We really could use the money this time, we can't do those larger projects." You know, this is one of the, the best things for our downtown, in my opinion, and I don't see why we can't give them another $5,000. It just really, really galls me. The next item is the Economic Development Commission in their budget. While we herald our low electric rates, it's there in, and they're wanting to put in solar lights for the billboard, which is sort of a, it's an oxymoron, and that's a $6,000 expenditure. I would just cut that all told. The billboard is there, I, I don't think we need to light it. The contingency general purpose is budgeted, and that's line 58820, that's budgeted $340,000. You know, quite frankly, since we have the increase in the salt in the public works budget, which I, I left alone, you know, that's one of the, the greater uses, in my experience, of the contingency account. You know, I think $200,000 is appropriate for that line. If, you know, hell freezes, freezes over, or the skies fall in, we could always transfer money from reserves, but we're talking about taxing the public and trying to reduce that. So, I would reduce line 58820, the general purpose contingency line, from $340,000 to $200,000. And I've already booked in the Board of Ed give back, I rounded it down to 411. That's a total of, on expenditures, a reduction of $787,000 using round numbers. From there, I went through the budget, and I took all of the capital expenditures. I think I got them all. And those add up to, and when I say capital, it's not just, you know, our traditional thought of capital is things that will last 20 years or thereabouts, you know, for bonding purposes. This is just regular capital stuff, you know, from police cars to rescue ropes, fire hoses, washers, dryers, you know, those kinds of things, washer dryer for the fire department. That adds up to $949,538. In addition to that, I would utilize $350,000 from cap and non-recurring, which is significantly less than what's in there. I think Mr. Bose said earlier, it's almost $400,000. That leaves a shortfall, because Mr. Bose, in response to correspondence with Mr., with Councilor Shoretell, you, you said that we had to come up with about $3 million, so I used $3 million as the target. That leaves a shortfall of $854,815 to be made up. And what I would suggest, since tonight is not budget night, is that the administration be given an opportunity to find $304,815, which certainly could be taken from reserves. I think I missed something. With the capital expenditures, that 949,538, I'd like that to be spent, or I'd suggest that that be spent from the CRA funds. That's only one-third of the CRA, in effect, it is reserves, but it's an appropriate usage of that money, because it's not operating expenses, they're capital expenditures. So, just, just to be clear on that. So, to go back to the balance, which is 854,815, I would give the administration the opportunity to, between now and Tuesday, decide where they can come up with 304,815, which certainly they have the opportunity to take that from reserves, that's certainly well less than the surpluses that we've had over the last few years. You know, I, I think that money can be squeezed out. And then, probably more troubling for some of us is, my understanding is, is about $1 million in the Board of Education reserve account, the 1% account that we've authorized. I would propose that $550,000 is transferred from there to be utilized in the budget. How that happens, I leave that up to Mr. Bose, because I'm not sure on the, the technical way that would happen. But I think that's the, the way to go about this, understanding that with regard to the Board of Education 1% account, it's my understanding, at least, when the Board of Ed was before us a few weeks ago, that they anticipate having a surplus of $1.6 million from this year. So, while it's 550,000, they would be replenishing, as projected, three times that into their reserve account. So, I don't want the reserve account to become like a slush fund, with all due respect to the Board of Education. You know, that adds up to $3 million, and that's what I'm proposing. I do have a spreadsheet that I could hand out to my fellow counselors, and I so move in accordance with the spreadsheet, Mr. Chairman.
Was I correct to understand that your spreadsheet already, does include the two reductions we've already made?
The, the 411 is, is shown there, the 58,000 is not shown there, but it is in the final I didn't know the exact number for the health insurance until I got here tonight. Jim, did you get a copy?
So, I, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, should your bottom line number be reduced by the 411 we've already taken out?
No, because that's shown on page one, up top. It's line, essentially line six.
So, so your, your motion is everything below line seven?
My motion is the entire document. So, the reductions are comprised of three components. The top component on page one is the actual reductions to the physical budget, and, and the one addition to the WCI. What? Yeah, that's spending. It's all, it's, it's all spending. So, and the total of those changes is the 787,000. So, then, when we go next to the capital expenditures, when you go to the next page, the total of all of that is the 949,538. And then, when I, you know, and then you got the 350. So, then, the, the total of that was the 208,6538. So, the 208,6538 from that needs to be subtracted, the health amount. So, when I do that, when I take 2,000,000, 086538, and I subtract 58657, I get 2,145,185. When I take that and subtract that from 3 million to zero out, I need to come up with 854,815. And to get the 854,815, it's 550 from the Board of Education Reserve, 304,815 from General Government, balancing out a 3 million.
Is there, so apparently Counselor Fishmine has moved his proposed spreadsheet as described. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Counselor Laffin?
Just a clarification question. The, can you talk about the Board of Ed 1% fund again? You want to take 550, I didn't see that on here anywhere, you want to take 550 from that account towards the end total to pay? Where does that money go into, for capital?
Why, leave it to Mr. Bose. It can go one of two places. It can go to fund the Board of Education's bottom line, therefore reducing the amount that the town gives them for this year.
That's, that, that's the best way, that's the legal way to do it, to reduce their request, 411, as you've already posed, plus 550.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't want to hurt, I, you know, I want to get them the same number, you know, that, if that's the way Mr. Bose says is the best way to do that, I'll, I'll take that representation.
So, that's basically the same, is if we just reduce their budget by 550, and they chose to spend the 550 out of their 1% account?
That's correct. They would have to use some of their reserves for the current, for the year that's before you. That's correct.
Okay, I just want to understand where he's coming from. Okay.
If we're talking about the existing 1% fund, you can't take money out of that?
No, but they can.
So, we're reducing the appropriation in the budget for education by another 550?
With the allowance of them shifting the money over, yes.
Well, but all we can do is just reduce it.
With the understanding, I don't want it to be perceived that I'm cutting the Board of Education anymore, that's why I did try and call Mr. Menzo, and he butt dialed me on my way in, and...
But, but I mean, the bottom line is, the only action would be to reduce the budget for education. What they do in order to fund becomes a question for them.
Yeah, I just want it clear that, I mean, I'll make the call, or, you know, Mr. Bose, whatever, that that is the intent, you know? If, if we get brushed back on that, then, you know, we talk about that on Tuesday. But I don't see that that's undoable.
Well, my, my concern would be, this is obviously a very drastic treatment of the budget. We have really little idea of what we're going to be receiving from the state at this point. Do you expect that there'll be a budget adopted in Hartford, Craig?
I, I, I'm seriously concerned that the other side of the aisle doesn't want a budget to be pushed. I know that we released our budget, the Republicans, yesterday, which actually shows Wallingford having a 2.2 million dollar increase over last year for educational funding. That's all I can tell you at this point.
So, at this point, there's a real potential there won't be a budget, and it'll wait until after the election to deal with it?
Well, no. I, I think under some vehicle, if a budget or mitigation program isn't adopted, it's up to the controller to make the decision. There's a, there's an end date on that, I think it's June 30th, something like that. So, it wouldn't be after the election, because those new people don't get sworn until next January, that would be the next session. So, you know, I don't think that changes anything that we're doing here.
I, I think it does, because whatever we budgeted coming from the state is a big question mark. There's, there's, as you say, there's not a lot of movement toward resolution of that, and we're, we're making huge changes in the way we fund, which will create another issue, major issue, for the next year's budget. 18, 19 is one thing, but then you go into the next year, and, you know, it's, it's more questions than answers at, at this point. So, I'd be very concerned about moving in this direction.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I don't see the drastic, I understand the CRA situation, you know, we've utilized it for capital expenditures in the past, you know, we're talking about taking the money essentially from three different places, so, if, I just don't know that, you know, because I want to work together. So, just, you know, where's the drastic?
It's drastic because we are increasing the amount of money we're using from reserves to fund most, if not all, of the capital. We're not adequately funding what we just heard from the controller with regard to the debt financing. I don't know what else is in here that will be inadequate. I mean, I understand you don't want a tax increase, but that, that's just not realistic, given what we're facing, and given what is not just what we're facing, the whole state of Connecticut is facing huge problems. So, if we really want to see continuity in our services locally, I don't think we can make a move like this with all these unknowns, and then hope for the best. I, I think, you know, it's, it's a real gamble, and if we had more certainty with what the future might hold with regard to the economy and the state and everything else, that's one thing, but if we really want to see that we have some continuity in services and continue our capital programs that allow our departments to provide services, then I think this is, this is, this is drastic.
Counselor Zandry, you had raised your hand.
Yeah, I, I think most of it was, was answered. So, basically, we, we cannot go in and do anything with the cap, capital reserve fund that the Board of Ed, not capital reserve, the, the money that they have in Ford, the 1% fund, thank you, the 1%, we, we can't go in after that. That's, that's up to them to spend based on, on the way it's set up. But what's basically being proposed in place to that is that amount, and Counselor Fishmine, what was that amount again for the Board of Ed?
550.
5, 550, thank you, Mr. Bose. So, 550. We're already down to, with the, with the earlier adjustment, 440... We're already down to, with the, with the earlier adjustment, four forty-one, eight thirty-two, which they indicated they could get away with, that takes the budget adjustment of one point one eight percent, and you're basically sharing it in half. And with, with the discussion point being that if they come up short, they can't find even more lines to cut, that they would just utilize that one percent fund to make it up. I'm a little leery with that idea, only because that's a lot of what we've been saying here over the years. We want to utilize more of a reserve fund to get a one-year offset, and it's not sustainable But it looks, yeah, okay. But I mean, I guess basically the, the question I had was answered, because it's, we're not going after that one percent fund, but the argument is that we cut it, let them figure it out. I mean, that's basically the way we've got all of these proposed cuts anyway.
I'm not suggesting that they cut any line in their budget. If they come to us and they say, we don't want to, we are unwilling to work together to take the money out of reserves, then that is their decision. I'm not looking to negatively impact their budget. My understanding is that from this year, this year, the end year, they're projecting to put another one point six million dollars in that one percent account. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, suggest, cajole, that they take five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is more, less than half of what they have in there now, which is one point two million, when they're going to be putting more than three times that in there in a few months.
So, okay, so then your thought process is that it wouldn't even necessarily subtract, it would just reduce their add for this year?
We have to subtract because of the physical, because the way the budget works, we can't appropriate the money and then say, give it back to us. So on paper, the way it works is we have to say to them, you're going to get five fifty less, but we're authorizing, suggesting, whatever, that you take it from reserves to meet your bottom line. That way they're, they're exactly where they want it to be, and we're working together.
Okay. I, I think I understand that part of it better now. Thank you.
Counselor Shortell?
I, I appreciate the spirit of this motion, and maybe there's some individual things in there we could also talk about, if you want to unbundle it. I mean, I do have, the parade concerns me a lot, and it's a lot of money for a parade, and it's only half the cost so far. I just am hesitant to touch the Board of Ed. I think that, I understand they have a big surplus this year, but I, you know, the year isn't over, and it's hard for me as a counselor to judge that. I don't know, what's the town, what's the town surplus? We don't know that, and we're not going to know that. So there's two sides to that coin. I have the Board of, I have an estimate from the Board of Ed. On the town side, we wait until the audit, so I'll know that around Christmas time. So I, how do I even make a decision on that? So I, I am very opposed to anything at this point that would further touch the Board of Ed budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. As other years too, I, I appreciate the effort, and it seems like every year they get a little closer and closer to where we can go. And as I've, I've kind of stated, or we might have discussed, the, my concern, to keep it broad without getting into detail, is the, is the all kind of, and I know it's all, it's the one-third use of the CRA fund to fund the capital expenses, because the capital fund is kind of, as a fund is recurring, so to kind of pretend like it doesn't exist for a year, just for the, the play of a, of a zero tax increase all at once is kind of, I don't want to mislead people either, because then they get kind of slammed with it next time. That's my, that's my quick, without getting into the detail or debate, objection or hesitancy over the proposal.
Counselor Marone?
Again, I want to say I appreciate the work that went into this, because I think you have some really good ideas here. I do kind of agree with Counselor Laffin, that I think that a lot of these are going to be recurring expenses at some point, and so I think that these are their capital expenses, this could put us in a, you know, in a difficult position next year. So I like the spirit, and I like that you tried to put something together here, I'm just not sure that this is going to work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did I hear Counselor Letourneau had a comment?
Yeah, I do, but I'm going to hold it for, for right now. I'm staying away from this.
Okay. I'm not seeing anything on the other side, so anyone from the public? No, Counselor Letourneau? No? Then we'll, we'll call the roll.
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Morganstein?
No.
Shortell?
No.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
No. Motion fails. If there are no other motions, I thought I would give you a fireworks update. So the fireworks contract for the past three years had expired and went out to bid. The cost of the pyrotechnics for the event increased by ten thousand dollars, bringing the total cost of the event up to forty thousand dollars. As of today, I am about three-quarters of the way there, and I have, I have three other requests to hear from, so I plan to have a final report by Tuesday night. There being no other business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I just, I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing. Well, that's all. You're welcome. Counselor Letourneau to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? We're adjourned.